Hey, good evening, everybody. This is the Wellington Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. And we're calling the meeting to order at seven oh one. We like to begin our meetings by showing respect for our country with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is now time to invite the public. We're speaking to you either. Please raise your hand to indicate interest. State your name and address for the record and just be mindful of the time so everybody has a turn. Don't have anybody here in person. Oh, hi, Michelle.
Just let us do the timer too, so. You're good. That's intriguing, my dear.
Hi, everybody. Michelle Doucette Cunningham, forty-one Lisker Road. I know that it used to be a standing item during COVID on the agendas to kind of give a report back to the community about how well the classes and teachers were doing in terms of outages or any particular classrooms that had clusters of outbreaks of COVID. But given the number of people I personally know who've been sick over the last three weeks, I was thinking it might be a great idea to add that back into the agenda for a little while because it provides a really good information to the community to get a sense of how broad COVID is spread within the community. It's really hard to assess risk anymore because there's no data source. But if there were, for example, that you had to close a classroom because there was an outbreak in a classroom, that would be really good information for us to have. So just a request that if it is something that comes up, if you can add that back in under the superintendent report every month, that would be really useful. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Carrie, yes.
Hi, Carrie Rainville, Potter School Road. I'm just here to give a few PTA updates. We have our monthly meeting this Thursday, the eleventh, at six P M. at Center Elementary School. It'll be in the library. We would love to have new and returning members come and join us. Anybody is welcome. We'd love to have you guys. A couple of other updates. We are planning a Valentine's Day photo shoot for C E S and H M S students. It'll be free to them. You know, we'll have a backdrop, some props, take some pictures, send it to their families. Just thought that would be a cute idea. So we have that coming up on Valentine's Day. We have our winter gala tentatively planned for February twenty-third. It's a Friday from six to eight P M. at H M S. So save the date for that. It'll be a great time. You know, we have a DJ concessions photographer. So we always look forward to that event. I just want to give an update on the M C M Pie fundraiser. That was a huge success and we were able to provide both H M S and C E S with popcorn machines and all the supplies to get started. National Popcorn Day is next Friday, the nineteenth. So we're going to have popcorn parties for all the students. So we're planning that as well. And we wrapped up with our holiday shop last month for C E S and H M S. And that was a great success as well. So thank you guys so much for your support with that. The kids absolutely love shopping for their loved ones. They got so excited coming down and purchasing, you know, gifts for the holidays. And then our next P T A meeting, not this coming one, but for February, it is February eighth at six P M. And that one will be located at H M S. Thank you.
Very busy. Sounds like you guys are popping. Thank you so much, Carrie. Okay, is there anybody else online interested in speaking at this time? I can't tell. No, and we don't have anybody in these groovy gray chairs today. So I guess that concludes our present to speak at this time, but we will, of course, have another one there at the end. So thank you. Okay, agenda item number four is the channel report. I don't have a whole lot to report on, except to say that Phil and I had a brief communication with each other. I'm wondering how you all feel too about considering sending a letter to the Summers Superintendent with our condolences for the tragic losses of some of their students and the difficulties of the families involved, as well as their first responders there in town. So if that's something that you think we ought to do or would like to help with, I could use some help putting that together. This side would be kind and something to do to support our community, the larger. Okay, moving on to number five, communications. Do you have anything more? Okay, great. Moving on to number six, superintendent report.
So staffing, we have no changes in staffing at this time. We will be posting for a substitute custodian. This is the first time we've we've fallen short and it was illness-related. Of course, it was during a snowstorm, but it worked out. It was on the weekend, so we had a couple of guys come through and really they did a great job. They clean both schools. So do you know anybody that's looking for occasional work as a substitute custodian? Pass the information along to me, please. The facility study, I talked to Q A and M. They're in the process of developing a first draft of the facility study. They are expecting that to to come out sometime. Towards the end of this month, they said they're expecting that they'll have something to us in February just as, you know, first steps. So more to come on that. The kindergarten age for attendance. This is something that the state has new legislation. I'm sure if you're in education, you know about this. It's Public Act twenty-three, two oh eight, section one A. They changed the age where you have to turn five by a certain date. It is now September one, two thousand twenty-four, starts next year, that to be eligible for kindergarten for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It is a change from the old cutoff, which would be January one, twenty-five, if that were next year. And just based upon that new change, obviously, anyone who falls outside of that, so now September one or two, twenty-four through August thirty-first of twenty-five, they have to wait a year. So they would enter now in twenty-five, twenty-six. There is, right now, we know we have twenty-two students in our roster. It's actually more than we've ever had at this point in time. Usually this is, it's really, really early for us to know that. Students who are eligible for kindergarten. We have four students not part of that twenty-two that are no longer eligible because of the change in the birthday. Some districts are having loads of kids not being eligible for kindergarten and trying to figure out, you know, what do we do? Do we have an alternate class? At this point, they wait another year. So basically, the impact, the families who have students that were eligible, but are no longer eligible, they can request an assessment to be completed by the school district to determine if they would be appropriate, developmentally appropriate for them to attend school. The state did not push out what assessment to use. The criteria was really vague. It is on districts to do it. You have to do the assessment if if a family requests it. This is the only year they're allowing that. So it's really, they're calling this a transition year. We wish they just backed it up. They didn't. It's the way they rolled it out. So next fall is the, to be able to bypass that September one date, the assessment would only apply to next fall. Beyond that, it disappears. So we are going to have to update at some point the the board policy regarding the new age group, new age requirement. It's not real, I mean, it's important, but it's not like super important because it's state law. We have to do it. It's just changing a date in your policy. So we will get to it.
Phil, any questions about that?
Yes.
The families who, the students are no longer eligible, are they, so do they? I don't want to say automatically, but do they have the ability to stay on our pre-K? Or do they do that completely first fall?
If there's somebody that's identified for special education services, that's in the pre-K program. And so the only four we know about currently are in pre-K. So those families learn pretty early on because of conferences. If they're not, they would have to apply again.
Could we consider in the future expanding the four-year-old program a little bit?
We could, but it doesn't change the age range. And it's it's only three months. I mean, I think you could expand, you could look to do that any year.
Okay, yeah.
When you see the budget this year, you might say different.
It's not your year.
But you could always, and who knows what's going to happen with universal pre-K if that ever comes about. But there are some districts that are doing transitional programs because, you know, they have a kindergarten group of a hundred and forty. We have thirty-five. So and there are districts where in thirty-five, they had a smaller group, fifteen of them now are no longer eligible. So they're like, what'll we do? They're doing the transition, one year of transition with, if they have current staff to do it. So it's just.
The other, my other concern is the kids who, whose families are not able to send them to preschool or daycare. So they're, and I know this was, this was the State Department's reason for keeping this January first for so long.
Yeah.
Was concerned about those children and having no education. So if there was somehow we could help them out.
There's not much we can do financially.
Well, not financially, but for providing something.
Yeah, I mean, it's just within whether they fit into our program or not.
Okay.
And that's the challenge. The good news is, I think, for us, the majority of our kids coming with some sort of preschool experience. So if they don't qualify for our program, they're going somewhere else.
Right.
It's a cost money now.
Yeah.
So and it's. The challenge with the assessment is they have to be developmentally appropriate. Well, now we're backing up the birth date even further. And developmentally appropriate is emotional, physical, social, academic. I mean, we're talking, it's got to be everything that they don't. If they're not ready, there's a reason they back up the birth date because they're looking at assessment data long term. And so we've got to follow it. So we'll see. The plumbing request, if you didn't hear, it went through the Board of Finance. It went through the Board of Selectmen. It's moved on to town meeting. That will occur Tuesday, January twenty-third at seven P M. at the Old Town Hall. Obviously, the more the merrier there for providing the support for our plumbing request. The budget workshops, you know about, that's just a reminder to the public. They start next week. They're each Wednesday for the next three weeks. The dates are January seventeen, twenty-four, and thirty-one. They start at six P M. They're in person and on Zoom. They will be in this room. And we do have that one additional meeting planned if we need it before our regular February meeting. Those are really, really important for board members to be at because there's a lot of information. And there's also present to speak during those meetings. So Brianna's inbox probably got blasted today because I just kept sending agenda drafts to her. So those agendas are out, but present to speak is in those. And that's the opportunity for the community to provide feedback. So please share that with folks as you talk to them. They have questions about the budget. That's the time to get that, or they can just email me and I'll respond.
Phil, that's also the center school band concert.
The chorus concert. I know they they voted without looking at the calendar. I was not so happy about that, yes. The school roof projects, I was able to meet, if you remember, I was going to meet with the state. Tammy Nuccio, Representative Nuccio, and I met with members of the Department of Administrative Services and Office of School Construction. The majority of the talking was done by their attorneys, attorneys plural. And that was to discuss reimbursement rates and the roof projects that they canceled. So it was a good conversation. They listened to us. They understood our concerns. They understood the concerns with the process of getting reimbursement for small towns, the calculation, just the, for small districts that have maybe more square footage or run a middle school, the challenges in that. The response was they don't set the rates. The legislators set the rates. So Tammy is going to try and press a little bit further on her side, the political side, to see if she can get involved in how that process happens when we're, you know, on the sixty percent side and someone, you know, near us is eighty and we feed to that school. It's, that's significant. It's a huge difference. We will. We were encouraged to apply for the H VAC grant. No surprise, I told them we were going to. And we were encouraged to do that at the same time we do our coordinating roof projects. And if we do solar. So they are basically saying, yeah, you have to reapply for your roof projects. So I've got a letter out to a person. I've had some information basically to find out what we need to do to resubmit. It would probably be summer of twenty-five because that would be if there's an H VAC grant, if you have funding for solar, all those projects, it would, they would kind of fall in line there depending on your C I P plan. So just getting the process going for the roofs again. And we'll see what happens tonight with snow, I think.
Are you saying that the repairs would happen somewhere in twenty-five or we'd be applying for those?
No, the, you apply well before. It takes months and months and months. It would be construction, summer of twenty-five. And that would be, because the idea here is construction would be all of those things aligned to set them up.
So Phil, when you're talking about combining the roof grant or the H VAC grant, are there any other concerns about the H VAC grant getting in before the Senate this come, now this year?
Yeah.
Does that mean that that's the new data you're going to try to push back and get the H VAC grant and the roof grant done earlier or application done earlier?
They won't look, they'll look at the roof grant. I could apply it every month. It's just when the, when we want to apply it. The H VAC grant, they won't announce until or look at until they have their new review date. They don't have a new review date out yet. What I am going to push for, honestly, is the, even though we have it on C I P as part of our million, is the looking, going back and looking at the, and this is part of our C I P conversation tonight, but it's all aligned. Looking at our owner's project manager for the H VAC project and specifically doing the assessment that is required to apply, you needed for both schools to apply for the grant. I don't want to wait on that one. So I would prefer that. And I'm looking at potentially February, looking to see if I can bring something forward as far as cost goes. Then if you can approve that, we can send that to town meeting as part of the million. We can get that process going earlier so that we know what we need for H VAC. It won't help C I P, but it'll help us be prepared for the grant application directly. The after-school program grant, good news. So we applied for an after-school program grant through the state and we received the grant. This is big news for Wellington. We are receiving approximately ninety thousand dollars. I had requested a hundred eighty-five. Based upon the number of applicants, they took some applicants and they're reducing their requests. And so basically, I have a workshop on Thursday. And that will be just to gather more information and figure out how we edit our application to work within our budgetary amount. It's great news because it's going to allow us to operate our own district after-school program every day. We just need to figure out within the, those finances. Is, number one, is it every day? Number two, what are the hours? Number three, how many kids can we bring in and still maintain a reasonable ratio? So that's where the decrease in the funding, I don't know what it's going to look like yet. There, there is, it is a cost program grant, meaning students who are eligible for free breakfast, lunch would be free. Students who are reduced would have a reduced rate. And then students who are, don't qualify, could still attend the program, but would pay. The idea is to keep, and the actual program grant is to keep the cost minimal. So even if you are a paying person, it's meant to be minimal. And so some of that would help come in to keep your cycle going, to keep the, the after-school program running. The other part of that and the good news is that the folks who get this grant, once you get it, you have the ability to reapply and continue funding. Once you're in the funding cycle, you're more likely to keep it going, which is good. It's hard to get into this funding cycle and we got into it, which is great. So I will have more information next meeting. I'm not sure any of the, you know, like start date, not sure of any of the, you know, how, how many days, the number of students that will be eligible, things like that. But step one, we got some funding for it, which is awesome.
What about transportation? Does that?
So we wrote it into the grant for transportation and that's where there's a huge cost. So I think it's going to be one of the things that comes out. Because when you run a bus every single day at five P M. or whatever it may be, it's very expensive.
Right.
Especially in Wellington, where if you are going, I mean, just what we run for clubs right now to run a couple buses, two or three buses, it's a lot of money and it would eat up the grant fast. So I think it's going to be better to offer the care with no transportation or we have to look to see how we, if there's a way we can do it and not leave students off that really do need the after-school care. The problem typically is if you offer it for one, you have to offer it for all.
Perhaps it could be held at center because that's where, even though I know it's traditionally been a hall, but because that's where the bulk of the children would come from. And maybe some of the children from fall could just stay on a bus that then goes to center to pick up the center kids. And so as long as it's continuous, you know.
Yeah, the problem is, is the, this, it's the center school group that when they are at five thirty or whenever it ends, if you're going to transport home, you're still paying for it.
Oh, no, 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 the parents should pick up.
Yeah.
I think at the end of the day, parents should definitely pick up.
And we're still not sure if it's going to be wanted sent, like it, the way the grant is written is the program director. So that program director would be a part-time employee. Basically, they're running it. There's a couple employees. If it's cheaper to run one location and bring students over, we'll do that. If it's same cost to run two programs and just have the, the director float, we can do that. We just need to look at, it's all about money, to be honest with you. It's what that we can fit within our budget. So.
I think it is fair, though, to have parents pick up. You know, that's.
I, I agree. It just limits. And that's why the grant is so expensive, the one eighty-five. It's not, it's the, the two things are staffing and transportation. Those are your costs. Those are big, your big costs. It's not in supply. It's the same thing as your budget. Your, your costs are transportation and people, right? So, but it's good news. So upcoming events, I already mentioned the budget workshops. Carrie stole all the thunder for P T A. The last thing I'll say is both basketball teams are underway. They're playing. You can find their schedule on the front page of the H M S website. From what I understand, I haven't gotten a chance to see them. The, the boys team this year sounds like they're doing very well. I don't know how the girls are doing. I did not hear that, but I heard I had people chirping about the boys. So if you get a chance and you want to go watch a basketball game, go for it. And I do not have any others tonight.
All right. Next up is the financial report for January twenty-fifth, which everybody should have received.
Drop it on screen. So I talked to my administrators yesterday and I basically said, you, you're on the freeze. We are only purchasing necessary curriculum supplies right now. That's really, and it's through a grant. The R S R grant is what we're, we're spending funds on. And it's really because of that program three that is the killer, the five seventy, five hundred seventy thousand dollars in the hole. I'll hold that freeze through February into February. I just keep looking at it. And really, again, I'm looking at critical maintenance repairs. If the roof is leaking, something needs to happen. You got to fix it. You got to do those things right then and there. I expect the excess cost, which we think is going to be around three hundred thousand dollars we'll get from the state. And then using basically every dollar in your non-lapsing account will cover the majority of the shortfall with a little. That won't cover everything. But that's why there's a freeze because I don't want to spend any of the extra dollars that you see as the positive. I think we're, we have that forty thousand in the savings in the health, health account, health benefits. But again, I won't know that. And that's why I, I can't spend that money until I know. So it's, it's not good, but we're managing it and we do have other smaller accounts, resources, like I have a little bit of money in my REAP grant. So when someone says, I need to do this for my science lesson, I need these materials, we're finding a way to, you know, squeak through those things. Hopefully, it doesn't last forever, but it's not a pretty picture right now.
When does the state money usually go?
So usually sometime the end of February or early March, that first round of excess cost comes in and it's usually the bulk of it. And then the balance comes towards May. The thing that I want to see is sometimes the state is supposed to fund it a hundred percent. They never do. It's because the feds don't fund it a hundred percent. There have been years that it's been seventy percent. Some recently, it's been seventy-five. I hope it's seventy-five percent. And if it's seventy-five percent, it's three hundred thousand dollars. That's really good news. If it's higher than that, which there is always potential because they're a little flush right now with some of their COVID funds, they could apply some COVID funds to that if they so choose. So if it comes back at eighty percent, that three hundred thousand dollars comes up a little bit higher.
Do we have to ask that or do they just like decide some and somebody's done?
We apply. So we send in, we have to send in all our documentation to show them. They figure out, you know, what our, we show them what our per pupil is. We give them our bills. We calculate it for them and they have to verify it. And then they basically send it to Donna and she applies it to the budget. So it's, it's a lot of money.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to number eight. That's new business. The first thing we need to do is approve the regular meeting minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. And we need a motion to do so.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Anything to discuss or edit? Okay, I'm all in favor of approving these minutes. Say hi.
I'm on it.
We need our essentials. Great. All right, moving on to the approval of the special meeting minutes or retreat from January third, two thousand twenty-four. Same process. I hope that we approve the meetings of the special meeting on January third, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. Second. Any need to discuss? Great. All right, I'll give a say hi.
I'm on it.
Next, item eight, C, Policy Committee Meeting Minutes. Those we just accept, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the same.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve or accept the Policy Committee Meeting Minutes of January third, twenty-four.
I'm going to accept the Policy Committee Meeting Minutes on January third, twenty-four.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, was there anything to discuss or questions coming? Great to know. Great, okay. I'm in favor of accepting those minutes. Say hi.
Hi.
Great. All right, we're moving on to new business. Eight, D, I'll see ninety-one, sixty, Board of Education student representatives. But we did get a document about via email.
Yeah, I can start with this if you want. The Policy Committee met and have a draft of a policy for student representatives. It was sent to you. This is a first reading, which typically means that you can ask questions, you provide some feedback, and then it comes back to another meeting. I already have print, principal feedback. They're good with the way it was, there were some questions about it. They're all set with it. So they were good the way it was written. This is a brand-new policy. It's, there's nothing in your policies now that's like this. And basically, we give student representative, create student representatives from center and whole school. Doesn't, doesn't need a number. And I think that was a little bit intentional to see how this goes. And they would basically provide student reports on a rotating basis. And that would be September through June. Figure summer didn't make a lot of sense. I do have to have this policy reviewed by the board attorney just to make sure state law, you know, we're following everything. It should be, should be easy. If you want, if you're happy with the way this is, and I don't know if people have had a chance to look at it and policy folks, you can add more. This is one of those, I would say, like easy checkboxes. If you like the way it is, you could add this to your budget workshop and not ruffle feathers without having to add this to a regular meeting such as in February. So if you liked it, you could easily add this as an item to, for approval at your, one of your upcoming workshops in time to then really probably apply it in February. I think we could have students in time where you could get some student reps at your regular February meeting. Anything policy folks that you want to add or they missed?
No, this was kind of spearheaded by me and I like the way it all kind of rolled out. I like the way it was designed. I think it's. Um, I like the way it was designed. I think it's, I think it covers all the bases that we're looking for. Um, and I'm glad to hear that the principals are on, on the same page with what we have on the policy there, so.
May I just ask a question? Of course, okay, um. Are there gonna be criteria that the principals are gonna use to pick the people, the students?
Or do you mind to that?
Go ahead, yeah.
So, we talked about leaving it gray and the reason why is we didn't want to keep it very narrow. The idea is to have a broad group of kids be able to participate, not just. If you're a student government or if you're playing sports. So the idea is to get a good snapshot, so. When the, and this is the introduction portion that they, we added to the policy. That when students are identified as student reps, the principal would bring them in and introduce them and say. Jen represents these folks. This is, you know, one of the reasons she was, she was chosen. So the idea is to get a broad. View, not just, uh, we didn't want to be a popularity contest. We didn't want, um, you know, students to be selecting and just. And, and I'll tell you the, the feedback, M K, Mary Kate Charles Middle School Principal had a really good question. She said. Um, can we add in there that staff will provide feedback? And I said, I don't think you need that because that's just what you are going, are going to do. That's your process. She's going to talk to her staff and say. Do you have suggestions and probably her team leaders? Do you have suggestions about who would be good students to fill this role? Here's what they're doing, here's what they would be providing information, um, and kind of recruit that way. Uh, but the idea was, we didn't wanna say you had to be an eighth grader or you had to be a fourth grader. We're just trying to give out a, a broad stroke.
I think that's great, um, and just one kind of procedural question. After the student reps are chosen, they'll be given orientation session. So does that mean like every month you're gonna do an orientation session with?
No, I'll, once, I'll probably do a lunch at center and lunch at hall. So once the four, or I think it's gonna be four. Um, at center are chosen, I'll go sit with them and talk to them. And basically prior to the meeting, their first meeting coming in. They'll have a chat, probably we'll have them come fifteen minutes early and have a chat with, with three on as a chair. Um, the idea from my perspective is just to give them. Probably show them a portion of, of, of video so they know what to expect, what does the room look like? Where are they in the agenda? Uh, and talk about how they can share things. So we've said you don't have to be in the room. If you wanna record something, if you wanna write something, if you wanna take some pictures of your artwork and narrate it. We wanna leave it for them to figure out how they wanna present it, because I think they'll own it a little bit better if they do that. If we just say write three paragraphs, that's.
Yeah.
Not gonna be as powerful. We wanna have them own it. And the other portion of that is that they wanna bring up. Um, some sort of issue. I've asked that, hey, you have to. You really wanna make sure you talk to your principals about it and that they're on it. They can then share to also share with the board to say, hey, I talked to my principal about this. This is an issue we see as a student body, something that we would like to see addressed. Support information that you would know as well. It's another, another voice.
Will other students or not those four have enough opportunity to share during the year?
So they can as president to speak, but they wouldn't be identified in this, I think this is very honest point, question. And you guys were talking about this, uh, I think during presence to speak, any student can do that. And it doesn't also mean we won't have other student presentations.
Okay.
Meaning if we wanna have a group come in and you could have them do a song. You can still do that. It doesn't have to be that they're part of one of the student reps, correct? Correct. So if you know the, the, the play is coming up and. We can figure those things out, right? And it's some of it's, it's marketing will. It's what, what can we show that the great things that our kids are doing? Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to come from the sport.
Thank you. Okay. So do we wanna add this to one of the um, budget agendas?
Yeah. Eight week, you wanted on the first one, knock it out, seventeen.
Can you give the building more time?
That's why I'm asking. They would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Great, look forward to having those representatives get at our meeting. That'll be fun. Okay, um, agenda item nine, old business. Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, Wellington Public Schools calendar draft. I think this is our second look at this.
Yeah, so we updated this, um, and you have an updated version. We checked the number of days in each month. Uh, we adjusted the days. We had missed um, a, a, a month and so that last day of school was adjusted, it was wrong. So we fixed that, which is. Why it's a draft, um. The things that you had pointed out about Labor Day is fixed, the June twenty twenty-five is, is fixed. After talking to admin, um, and you would ask a question about the October third half day. It was the fourth and we couldn't come up with a reason why we didn't put it on the eleven. I think we just missed it.
Yeah.
Um, maybe I'll get some plaque from, from E O in the other region, but it's, it's only a half day. So I, I, it's not, if it were a full day, I would call that, but, so we moved that from the fourth to the eleventh to make that a longer weekend for families. I guess. The other part of this is during admin, we had a conversation about feedback from staff and parents about that whole November piece where conferences fall. I'll be honest, I, I got the sense it was coming from one particular building. I don't know how widespread it was from staff. And I, I don't know that there was a ton of families that were concerned, at least several, several people in this room that are part of conferences, so. If it's something that you think is worthwhile, I did not poll people yet. Uh, because quite frankly, what I heard from admin, I wasn't like raising the red alarm flag. Um, and I know that there's been thought put into this in that November. Trying to keep it one block, this, this a struggle. If you want me to go back and poll staff and families, I can prepare that and then you can look to approve this in February. If you think that, you know what, there's, I, I think it's okay the way it is, then you can approve it the way it is. That's, that's up to you.
Firstly, I, I wouldn't mind a, this is not an overly pressing issue, so I wouldn't mind you pulling staff only because I kinda wanna know the why. Not necessarily the yes or no, but the why behind it. Why would you wanna move it or why would you?
I think a lot of the why that I heard so far, and I don't know if it's the only why, is just because it's a holiday weekend, it's busy for. Prepping for food and, and you know, you have night conferences, you're exhausted and you've got family coming in or on Thursday. It's a busy, busy week. We do let our staff go on, and this is where it's like balance, right? So when the day is over. On uh, Wednesday, we don't keep them. So when the students go out the door, the only people that are listed in the buildings are the people to make sure the bus is getting safely and then they leave, but we allow staff. To go that day. Right when students are. So they do get out early, but I understand it. It's, we all know that's a busy week. It's just the, um. Challenge of that November when you move it. If you move it to December, the fourth, fifth, sixth, same concept. Um, now you have a broken week, two week and two weeks in a row. So that was the main thing that I heard. It doesn't mean it's the only thing I'm gonna hear when, when it comes down to polling.
Right. And that's, that should be, I'm still curious to see if that ended up being a running trend or if there's other people.
And we do have time to do it. I would make it a really uh, lengthy survey. It'd be a couple of questions and oh, one open ended that says, what do you have that you would suggest instead?
Yeah, that first weekend in December makes it so you have two weeks of school in that whole entire month. And that's busy for winding up end of the year projects, you know, change with the students, so I would not choose that.
It's also, we've talked about because it's a report card time, so trying to get report cards. Talk to families ahead of time and then have report cards come out. So, you know, there's. There's pros and cons to wherever you move it. Um, it's really the way it sits right now is about continuity of instruction.
And you lose that if you're going to that.
That's. That is why prior, prior board events. Had put this, you know, it was probably ten years ago at this point, said, we've got to fix November. It's just so broken up.
Now, another thought, in Mansfield needs to be report cards before conferences, so by the time when you got to conferences, you were. You know, you, your report cards had gone home and then you could then just.
I think, sorry, let me to cut you off. I think a lot of teachers do their report cards, but it's not. It's not out there for families to see yet, and then they're sharing the information at the conferences. It's not the report card is laid out in front of you. But they're gonna, they're sharing with you what's coming.
Yeah, cuz it would be hard to do a weekend, um, you know, the conferences and then after each of your report cards.
The other. The other conversation that's come up is just talking about doing a full day. You need me to alarm?
Yeah, that's why I'm down here. I'm gonna lock up and turn off lights upstairs or you just turn on the alarm.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, it's doing one full day. No school, do conferences all day long and blast it through. I don't know that that achieves much.
That's a long game for the teachers.
It's a lot for teachers and it's, it's, I think it creates a bigger problem for families too, so.
And the teachers have all the kids.
I guess the question is, do you want me to poll or not? If, if you wanna know the answers why. You can get, and, and, and families might say this is not an issue, leave it alone. Families may say this is a major issue. We just haven't said anything.
I know for me it worked. I like that way, but I'd like to know what family. What they, other family think, but before I made a decision. I like, I think we should poll.
Poll both, families and teachers.
Yeah.
So then you can hold this. Is there anything else on the calendar that you want me to ask about? I think from the standpoint of uh, the childcare piece, I, I think I would actually tell people that we're gonna have childcare, so, cuz I'm gonna. You have to provide the draft calendar as part of this. Um, I would tell them that we're gonna have childcare on these half days, cuz people may look at this and go, oh, the half days are back again. But the childcare is there. That was the only complaint we had about the half days. So I would love that. Now, is there any other item on there in the, the big picture that? You want me to ask about since we are polling?
Would the um, childcare be different than the after school program? Continue to run the way it runs now?
It, it would be the, it would be the after school program.
It would become, okay, it would be part of the after school program. Okay. So some kids could just go on that one early closing day but not go.
We would sort, yeah, that would sort that out, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz if I had extras, I can put pairs in there because there, I can rub them and there is a full bag. So just that?
You're gonna ask those questions and then hopefully ready to approve at the next.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll, I think we'll have, cuz usually if I say, hey, the surveys do in three days, people will do it right down there. You know, I can turn it around pretty quick. We can get it out of digital backpack this Friday. And then what I'll do is I'll follow up early next week with a solo school messenger that adjusts the survey. So that way they get the, just the email about the survey and that doesn't get lost in the digital backpack. And then we can turn the data around pretty quick.
On the teacher survey, you talked about asking open ended for alternatives. Could we also ask open ended for reasons why, why they?
That's a big part of it, yeah, definitely, yeah. Yeah.
Alright, um, hopefully we'll have that ready to roll next one. And then we're moving to nine B capital improvement project requests.
So, um, I gave you the C I P projects last meeting and I've kinda going back and forth. I've had several conversations with Donna about this and I have a suggestion for you. So, um. Stay in your seats. I am gonna suggest that you request the C I P committee for a minimum of one point five million dollars. And I'm gonna explain why, and that is for twenty-four, twenty-five. We currently have the million dollars that was put in C I P. That was, did not impact taxpayers and I want everybody to hear that again. You were not taxed. We were not taxed on that million dollars. It was taken on a surplus and came from other things, so it didn't hit the taxpayer. The one point five then would be added to the million for a total two point five, and here's the reason why. If they added that between the two totals, between, or between the two amounts and to create a total, you could cover. The following items. Both roof projects. That I have right now at five forty and seven seventy. The C E S chimney at eight hundred, I'm sorry, at eighty, not eight hundred, eighteen. The HVAC study and owner's project manager cost for both schools. That, this is all stuff that's in year one. Um, that'd be a total one fifty. The plumbing work that you have in year one, twenty thousand times two for forty thousand. The C E S upper wing windows, which Samantha last meeting kinda convinced me that that should be moved up because of HVAC. That was eighty thousand. The solar panels. Which that price is unknown. But what I did find out, and this is really, really important. Is it is, it is reimbursable. If number one, you own it, you cannot lease it. Number two, you have to do it with a roof project. If you try and do it two years after you've done a roof, you'd be, it will not be reimbursed. And the reason why is because they want the warranty on the roof. They want it done at the same time. So he told me that and I said, that makes sense. So I don't have a price on that. What I'll tell you is Region nineteen did their solar panels. I think the cost. Um, was two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty. It was one point six million before reimbursement. They were able to get one thousand five hundred eighty, uh, one thousand five hundred eighty-two solar panels. And they have about two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, so they have about three times, about three times the square footage we have. So I estimate it's gonna cost Wellington about a half a million dollars. That's my ballpark in. Cost increases, I don't know if that's real or not. So if you total all the projects I just gave you, without the solar, I'm at one point six million. If you then add the panels, your over two million dollars already. I haven't even touched HVAC. The reason for the one point five million, here's the biggie. Because I haven't touched the HVAC piece and the grant is due in December, I can't tell you what that. The study is gonna tell you you need. And to be able to apply it, you need to do the study. What I learned from O S C G R. Is that you need the study, but you also need your local portion to be approved at town meeting. Meaning you need the funding for it. So you don't, even though we put up the total, so like the E O Smith piece, they put on the town question one point six million, they paid three hundred thousand. Okay, um, and they didn't actually pay three hundred thousand, it came out of the pool. You need to put on that question to pull them out, but you had need to bu- have the budget for the, your portion. The reason why this is important and my suggestion is that you. My request to you would be approve the projects of the, the list of projects that you have in front of you. I expect C I P is just gonna do a flat number again, which is what they've said they were gonna do, another million dollars or whatever it was. That you can apply the projects as they come up and as you're needed. And it would allow us to align the grants for HVAC, um, solar and the roofs. If you wanted the solar. It would also. It, it would also allow. Donna and I to look at the impact on taxpayers. And bond, potential bonding. Because one of our pieces in conversation, and this is not a you approval, this is a board of finance, this is a capital, uh, a C I P committee conversation. Is that C I P makes their recommendation for the brands, figures out how to fund it, right? So if it's more expensive, say they only put a million in. And you need more, it's not enough money, which it's not enough money, it's just the projects that we have listed. And they want more and you're gonna bond a second time, or if you had to bond a second time. You are wasting money in doing those bonds, bond app, applications and, and all of the, there's a ton of fees with them. So it might make more sense, and this is where Donna and I had a conversation, was it might make more sense to just bond. A couple million dollars or three million dollars and put up several items with it. As you know, other groups in town are looking at. Projects, significant projects. So if you were gonna bond five million dollars and a portion is going to the schools, a portion is going to fire, a portion is going to rack, whatever it is. You're doing it one time versus multiple bonds. That you're paying fees on top of fees. So what I can't tell you is what that bond amount would be. What I can tell you is I think one point five million puts you in a spot that regardless of a bond. Um, regardless of kind of the budget piece. You could really take a pretty good swing at your capital improvement projects. Um, I think if you only do a million, something's gonna get lo- lo- left off. I'm gonna give you the example, if it's, you know, if you're. I'm gonna give you the example, if it's, you know, if your HVAC recommendation comes in at five million dollars and you're getting, you have to pay forty percent of that, that's gotta come out of the bond. It's not gonna be budgeted. So that's why I say it's, there's gotta be enough here where your local share is not in terrible shape. Um, and you can get through those pro- projects. So if you want me to say it again, really fast, both roofs, the chimney, ooh, that one makes me nervous. I'm gonna let them in and then if it happens, I'm gonna dump them. Give me one sec. All right, thanks. Both roof projects, the chimney, the HVAC study, the owner's project manager, the plumbing work, the windows for the upper wing and center, solar panels, that would be over the two million dollars. So something else comes up and breaks, you need to fix it. There's money in that account that you could use. So that's my recommendation, is to ask for the one point five million. You're basically asking for the money and, and sharing the project list that we have. So your motion really doesn't have to have the dollar amount in it. If you just give me the nod and say, yeah, when you present to CIP, you're gonna share those projects and share the why one point five million.
Would the solar panels include a solar study to find out how much we get in return?
It would, absolutely. It would be all part of it, drawings, all that. So I already have the, um, basically the town question and the information sheet from Region nineteen. It was really well done. Um, so all of that would be done. Like, I can't tell you how many solar panels we need. Um, that would be determined. They did it on one building now. Sometimes they hit you twice because you have to do two buildings cuz you need two sets of plans, you need, and it's two applications. Um, it's not one. Um, so you would have all of that information. You would know the expected savings to come out of that. You should only do that if you think you're gonna stay in the buildings for twenty years. If you're not, I don't recommend the, the, um, solar panels. Um, the only other option, if you wanna leave solar panels out and leave them as a potential for future, is those big panels that go on the ground that you could potentially do in a, a parking lot. Um, or you could do in the lower level of the whole school field. You lose field space, but it's not really used that much anyways. Those are the, the only way you would get solar panels if you didn't do them as part of the roof. So there's, it's a priorities, right, trying to figure those things out. But if you're getting sixty percent reimbursement on them, that's not a small chunk of change. It's a lot of money.
Wouldn't we get reimbursement on the roofs also?
Oh, yeah, definitely. That's why they encourage you to do solar panels when you do your roof projects. So same thing happened at Region nineteen. They were doing the roof projects and then OS CGR said, are you using solar? They talked about it and said, it's reimbursable, we're gone. So they submitted an additional application for solar and that's why they did it.
I think we have the facility study done and we're suggesting that we're gonna replace the roofs on both schools and then add solar panels.
Yeah.
And per your comment just right now, if we're gonna stay in the schools for twenty years, that makes sense. A facility study to me would, the, the person or the group doing the facility study would to me, recommend that or, or like, it's important to me to hear from somebody, yes or no, that doesn't make sense or that does make sense.
Correct.
Um, because the schools are old, they're wicked old and I can't proceed being in those schools for twenty more years, eh, but I don't know, it just concerns me. That's a, that's such a big giant question mark.
It is. I, I, this is the way I look at it. If something happens in this facility, so it comes back and they just, you know, bore us with, it's gonna be so expensive to repair all these things, just pipes alone, things like that. And there's a shift in thinking, you've still put money in CIP that would just simply be applied to some other project. It, it could be a renovation, right? Um, not necessarily a project. It's, you're basically, and this is why they put the million. They were setting million, a, a, a million dollars aside for school projects so that we could start fixing things as we move forward. Now, the million dollars doesn't go far when you have two roofs to do. But if they were not done, that million dollars is still there for school projects.
I, I appreciate the fact that as someone who's beaten the drum for a long time about long-term planning, strategic planning, all that stuff, I appreciate the fact that um, we're looking forward and, and making a plan, not just by the seat of our pants. I feel like that, that makes sense, what you're talking about. Um, that, that chunk of money and those chunks of projects that we could, um, check off, basically.
The, the one thing I'll say from my perspective is that if they only put a million dollars in, I think the solar panels have to come off your, your list of things. Because you, I think it's a bigger priority to have some sort of cash flow if there's, it even exists for HVAC. Like, you have to reprioritize the list of, of things. If I'm looking at that list, I'm gonna go, you know what, maybe we just can't do the windows right now either because we need as much money for HVAC as possible so that we can apply for a grant. You don't wanna miss that opportunity because you don't have funding for your portion. That makes sense.
And yet we heard from Samantha the importance of doing the windows because of the HVAC. So this is a very tangled situation.
Which is why the one point five million is what I'm suggesting to you. I, and I'm saying that, I said minimum. I'm saying minimum. And so Donna and I can't speak to at this point in time, like, what does that impact for a taxpayer? We, we don't know that yet. Because we don't know what the total projects are. The other piece of that was we don't know the, the bonding piece of it, so. Doesn't, you know, if you're gonna do a two million dollar bond, it's make just as much sense to do a four million dollar bond or a five million dollar bond. Those are things that we'd have to, we'd have to look at. That's not on this board. We're just providing the feedback to CIP and Board of Finance to say, look, we've got some big projects that need to be done. If you wanna get a piece of the pie from the state, you have to follow the rules. And one of those rules is the study and recommendation, what to do for HVAC. And oh, by the way, it's gonna cost a million dollars to do the recommendation. But you'll get sixty percent, not zero, which is the majority of our projects. So you do have to approve something on the CIP plan. It's just a matter of if, I would suggest you not do it, the dollar amount that's on there, just approve the list of projects I, as I presented for center school and all school. That's what I'm putting, we're putting into their CIP system. We're doing every single project. And when I present to CIP, I will present it as here are the projects and the, and the board is requesting a, a minimum of one point five million dollars. Here's why and explain.
Okay. So is that a motion we need to do now?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it has, for me to really submit it to Board of Finance, I need you to say, yeah, those are the projects we want in there. And, and it doesn't even matter what year it's in. That's why I'm saying the list of projects as submitted by the superintendent for central hall schools.
Who thinks they can take a stand with putting all those words together to give that motion a rest? I, who? I already lost it. Yeah, we. What did you bring up? Request from the CIP, a minimum of one point five million dollars, which is money to cover the width of project as submitted by the superintendent of schools. Is that right?
Yeah, if you wanna put the dollar on, sure.
Did I say it or did you say it?
I said it, but it just came out of your lips.
You sounded amazing. Okay.
You should read it again now that you did that.
Oh, sure. Okay, we are requesting from the CIP committee, a, a minimum of one point five million dollars for money to cover projects listed by the superintendent for both schools. Yes, enough, I think. Great, okay. Do we need to discuss it?
Yeah, um, are you sure you wanna put an amount in? Does there have to be an amount in there? Can we just, right, so the danger in putting an amount in a motion like this is that that's going to pigeonhole you to, they're gonna see you put in one point five and say, okay, you want one point five. He really may be wanting to give you more. If there's other people that are trying to get money from CIP, they're gonna see that number and say, if they're willing to do it, they're gonna say, well, there you go. That's the number you're gonna get. That's gonna be the end of it.
I'm saying the same. I would amend your motion to take out the amount and simply approve the projects as suggested by the superintendent to the CIP. That is my suggestion.
So what are the repercussions of that? Like, they, I guess either way, they could just say, they're not gonna blanket approve all of the projects, I would imagine.
No, they're just, they, they just get the list of projects and they, even though you may have put these in a five-year plan, but they move them around. They've always done that. Where, where it's funky now is it started last year with the, just the blanket million dollars and they didn't, there was an expectation that, you know, roofs are gonna be part of that. They didn't have to say that. Um, and I don't think they did that in a million dollars. They just said, you have a million dollars for school projects. The same thing will apply with the trust that it's gonna go through you. It's gotta go through the Board of Finance. It's gotta go through the selectmen because it's gotta go through town, town meeting. So any money that's being spent out of that would go through that full process. So you put some, I suggested some wacky projects. You know, I want gold writing, uh, across the buildings. And you approved it. That wouldn't go anywhere beyond. It wouldn't go to the next, it would go to the next step and it just, that would be the end of it. So it's gotta go through that full process, so I think not saying the dollar amount is fine. I think you can just say you're you know, you're approving the list of projects as submitted by the superintendent of schools to be submitted to CIP. That's all you need.
Uh, I'm, I'm just concerned about the moving around, like the, the timelines are very specific for some of those projects for reimbursement. So those are moved to year five, that doesn't help us at all.
But they can move it, but if they, as long as there's funding there and they stayed the same way, they did not put, I, that I know, I don't know that any projects were put in year one last year. They just made a new line that said a million dollars for prep school projects. That was what was in year one. Next year would be the same thing. They'd put a new year one, one point five million dollars for school projects. And then we pick, you'd pick and choose as priority, right, as how you fulfill them. I don't know how they're planning forward for the school process, but they're trying to build that pool.
So how would that number be arrived at if we didn't provide that for them?
Oh, I'm gonna give it to them. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, well, and that's why I listed those projects and that's why I'm saying one point five million dollars. I think the other part of this conversation, Donna and I have already talked about this, that we need to go in on the same page to say, here's why. Um, if you don't put enough money in and there's not enough local share, you can't apply for the HVAC grant. If you don't have enough money, uh, in, for the roof projects, you can't apply for a roof grant. Um, if you do the roof grant, but you don't want solar, you're missing the twenty-year window. You're not gonna get solar on the roofs. So all of those things, I feel like the list of projects I gave you all kind of mesh together. There's, the odd duck might be the chimney, right, and some of the plum, plumbing projects, but we've just been fixing plumbing as we go. So I, I don't think, if it wasn't an issue last year, I don't think it would be an issue this year. It's just explaining to them why is it one point five billion. And they may, I, I mean, notice I said minimum. I'm gonna say the same thing to them, minimum. Donna may say, if you're gonna do that, you may, you should bond. And if you're gonna bond, I suggest you bond an even higher amount. That's where we don't have that financial piece yet. That, that will be brought to CIP. It'll be brought to, to Board of Finance. But I think to our point, I do feel that the dollar amount matters in, in what you are sending. As long as you know, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna say minimum of one point five million dollars.
Okay, so good catch. All right, good. Did you wanna say something else, Jen?
Um, I just wanna, do you feel like it would support you more if we, if we set the dollar amount or?
No. I've been pretty transparent about it. It's gonna be on the recording. I think, you know, people know that there's a lot of big projects coming up and I mean, you can't say anything if you, if you don't have enough funding to apply for a grant.
Yeah.
Don't blame me.
Two questions. Um, the HVAC, the, um, OPM's evaluation, which is gonna lead to the HVAC grant, is that reimbursable or no?
So anything done before the grant is probably not. You, you eat the cost of, they, they may allow you to give some of the OPM, but not the evaluation.
Okay. Um, the other thing is.
We'll write it in, we'll write every dollar and then cross our fingers.
The other thing is, won't we get close to half a million back in our reimbursement if we do get reimbursed for the solar and the two roofs?
Yes, but that's, I've already factored that in. I've already factored that into the amount that you need.
That was the two point five million that you mentioned.
Correct. Yes, that's, it's, it's more than that amount without the grant reimbursement. I've factored that in, so you have your local share. It's like two point three.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, our motion has been amended in a friendly way to now state that the Board of Education requests that the CIP committee approve funding to support school projects as submitted by the superintendent. Is that acceptable to everyone?
So do you accept it from, who made the motion?
I accept the friendly amendment. Tracy, do you second?
You made the friendly, who made, you made the motion now?
So I made the motion, Tracy.
So you have to accept the friendly.
I completely accept the friendly.
And you have to agree.
Okay, so there's no further questions, but we're ready to go and um, approve that request for funding for the school projects as submitted by our superintendent. Um, okay, everybody in favor, say aye.
I agree.
I mean, they sort of sentence, sounds good, okay. Pass that through. Please go ahead and do such. Thank you. Did you have anything else you needed to add?
No.
Good to go. All right, um, we're moving on back to present to speak. And, um, we don't have anybody in the room, but if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand using that special little hand in the reaction section, um, and just please state your name and address for the record. One. Okay, well, thanks for coming. Thanks for speaking with us. Um, we're moving next to board comment. I guess it's our turn to say some words to anybody who wanna begin.
Yeah, sure. Um, so I just wanted to put out there that, uh, after the first of the year, I know it's raining, I know there's snow out there, but it's probably the night to think about baseball and softball. So Manstil has opened their Little League registration. Uh, you can go to M A L L C T dot org. It's Manstil, Ashford and Wellington. Um, I'm gonna do it. I have a statement because I coach girls team there, but it's, it's, I know several parents actually in Wellington who volunteer and do things on the board there at the Manstil, Ashford, Wellington, uh, baseball, softball. And it's a great opportunity for kids to get out and do something and, and learn, learn a sport if they don't know it or replace them if they enjoy it. I know, um, the triads come up, they came up at the Manstil Community Center and they are a lot of fun to do, like volunteered in trials, triads last year, um, and that was fun. So any, any interest in that, I, I suggest signing up for that. And the other thing I wanted to say tonight is, I wanted to give kind of a special thanks to the cafeteria staff at both schools, all in center. I, I know we talk a lot about teachers and they do a lot of work. Trust me, I, I understand they do a lot of work with the kids, but I think a lot of times the cafeteria staff kinda falls through the cracks and they're the ones who keep the kids fed. They're the one, and they seem to have, the kids have such a great rapport. I saw it doing volunteering for holiday shop. They have such a great rapport with the cafeteria staff and it wouldn't be possible if we didn't have such a good staff at both, both schools. I just wanted to say a special thanks to them today.
Not gonna pick names up in the jar with popsicle sticks.
You don't have to have everybody speaking.
And did you wanna pick something?
I think I'm gonna pass this.
Thank you. All right, John, did you wanna?
Um, I just keep thinking about the, how we started the meeting out, um, just thinking about the summer's situation and as a board just supporting them like through the air. I don't know, I just, it, I am totally happy to do that letter. I think that um, whatever we can do to support that community, um, will be huge.
Thank you. Um, John, did you have any final comments?
Uh, just definitely, I'm saying prayers for that family in summers and then, uh, yes, there was definitely, oh, the older parents, you know, when I was running for this position, everybody talked. Yes, there was definitely, oh, the older repairs, you know, when I was running into this position, everybody talked about the repairs to the schools. And to see it actually going through just warms my heart. It just, it's exciting.
I agree with everything that's been said so far and I'm excited that. Uh, to, to move forward with this student rep, and, and helping edit the great addition to our meetings.
Okay, I just was gonna say, um, that town meeting is Tuesday, January twenty third at seven PM, if that's what you said. So as much support as we can offer, I hope that people will come on out to that and, um, here would have said, speak up and definitely vote. Really important to do those things. Um, and I will see you all next week and the week after that. And then the weekend, as we trudge through our budget season, but, um. I think we're gonna be able to do some good things, so we'll make it through. Okay, we are ready to adjourn. We need a motion for that. That's what you hear.
Adjourned.
That's what you're saying, like, whoa. Alright, John, Jen, does anybody want to discuss it? No, great, all in favor. And we are adjourned officially at eight twelve PM.